We're good to go. Welcome, everyone, to our January School Board meeting. Glad to have a nearly full house here. That's always nice, and I know that most of you are here to support our students, and that's extra nice. So we will start our meeting today with a moment of reverence from our business administrator, Zane Wolstenhume, and then, following that, our board member, Amber Allred, will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Our Heavenly Father, we bow our heads in prayer this evening. We're grateful to be convened for the school board meeting, and we're grateful for the opportunity we have to serve the students and patrons of this district. We pray a special blessing to be with the students and their parents and guardians at this time, that they'll be able to navigate these difficult times and pursue their educational goals. And pray for our teachers and principals who are in the front lines, helping them along this path. We ask that thou would bless us this night, that the decision will be made, that it will be in the best interest of everyone involved, and say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with whose majesty Thank you, Zane and Amber, and we do need to let you know that board member Anderson is joining us online, as is board president Zundle, and perhaps the superintendent, who's at a conference, but we have the assistant superintendent, Chad Carpenter, filling in So now for the best part of our meeting, celebrating student achievement. So we will turn time over to Mr. Carpenter. Thanks for the signals.
Thanks, Jer. Nice to be with you. We are going to celebrate quite a few students tonight. We have our January and our February Students of the Month, so we will go in this order. We'll start with Ben Lowen High School. Let's start with Ogden High School. Principal Haney, are you...
Yeah.
Okay. Yep, will you come up and introduce your students?
Sorry, I thought you were doing an itinerary, like going through the whole. Okay, I am lucky, I get to announce two of our amazing students, and our counselors wanted to be here, but they are back at parent-teacher conferences. So my first is Aleah Alter Moreno. Come on up, Aleah. And Mr. Harland, one of our amazing counselors, has selected Aleah as his Student of the Month, I believe, for everything she's done in her senior year. And Aleah would probably tell you that she, I don't know if it was that she didn't like school, but Aleah sometimes struggles in groups, right, just like right now, and so I'm so proud of her for being here and for stepping outside of her comfort zone. And I just wanted to read you what Mr. Harland said. He said, "Aleah started off the year with some worries about graduation, and she had some anxiety about attending school. After a parent and student meeting where some adjustments were made to her schedule, Aleah set some goals, and something really clicked. Aleah has made some tremendous changes. She has overcome obstacles. She has shown to be a resilient student. She has never given up. She is staying connected to her OHS family." Right? Ms. Wendy, our behavior interventionist, and Mr. Harland, and Doyle Holt, who runs our Tiger Rock program. She's learned to ask for help, and I think that's one of the big, I think it's a very important skill that all of our students are still working on, and I am proud of you for that. She's confident in her capabilities. She's become goal-oriented. Someday, she wants to look into the law enforcement program, still has some interest in cosmetology. She is learning to cope with some anxiety, and she has almost a new confidence and dedicated herself to graduating from high school. Mr. Harland said, "I have never had a student make this much of a drastic change in her attitude and commitment to better her life." And he said, "I am extremely proud of Aleah and what she has accomplished." So thank you, Aleah. That's why you are the Student of the Month.
And would invite any of your family or friends that are with you to come up as well?
Yeah. Okay, and my next Student of the Month is Jasmine Martinez. Jasmine, will you come on up? So her counselor is Amy Green, and again, she wants you to know how proud she is of you. Jasmine has been a big part of the culture at OHS. She's been a student body officer. She is responsible with her classes at school and her work responsibilities. Ms. Green chose you because of the personal growth you have made this year, which has included learning to love yourself and being able to find the positives in life every single day. Jasmine wants to study in the medical field, and she's interested in attending either the U or Weber, but she would like to become a traveling registered nurse. She enjoys going to the gym, exploring and traveling, and spending time with family and friends. Heard some of her teachers say Jasmine has so much drive and so much determination. She's passionate. When she puts her mind to something, she can do anything. She has the biggest smile and always tries to include everyone around her. She is fun, and I love her in my class. And that's the one thing I would say about Jasmine. Every day I see, get to see her come to school, and every day she has the biggest smile on her face, and I really do believe that it's infectious, and she makes other people around her happy. We are so glad that Jasmine is our student, and that is why you have been selected Student of the Month. I know you're shy, but it's okay. You did great.
We'll go next with Ben Lowen and Principal Paul. You'd come up?
Okay, I am happy to be standing up here next to Hope Abel. The thing I love about Hope, and then I also hate about Hope, is that I like to be the most busy, crazy person in the building, and I cannot compete with Hope, because she is involved in everything. Multiple sport athletes, she's our cheer captain, swim team, JROTC. Maybe one of the most impressive things about Hope is when you look at Ben Lowen and what we're trying to be is college, career, and community-ready, she fits every single one of those areas. We know that after she graduates, she's going to serve our great country in the reserves for...
Which branch?
For the Army. And that means a lot. That means a lot, because she is willing to sacrifice and take all these skills and everything that she's learned to serve our great country. Something that impresses me about Hope is she drives every day from Tremonton to be a Scot, which is pretty impressive. It doesn't surprise me, because I think people could drive a lot further, but I agree, Joyce. She makes that sacrifice, that commitment, because she enjoys Ben Lowen, but I think we definitely get more out of that drive than she does, because as an office aide, she was my office aide, and I got to see her smile, the way she treated people as they came through, and the way that she treated students and everybody every other day in our office. So couldn't happen for a better person. She represents Ben Lowen in a way that we appreciate, and everything that's good about Ben Lowen High School is right here. So Hope Abel, congratulations. You've got to go shake some hands. Okay. Andres Rincón is our Student of the Month from last month that we were able to celebrate a few days ago and get his picture. It's hard to get a hold of Andres because he only has one class at Ben Lowen, because he has done everything he needed to do to graduate, completed all of his programs with the OWTC, and the good thing about Andres is he's so unassuming and like a quiet leader that maybe you don't notice him all the time until you look at the transcript and you see exactly everything that he has done and put all the time. He's taken advantage of all the programs, both the Ben Lowen and the OWTC, and he's also a great leader and a great representation of Ben Lowen High School. So congratulations to Andres if he's out there.
Okay. We'll next go with George Washington High School and Principal Bell.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here today. We're fortunate to celebrate two students, and those students have nominated a staff member that they would like to have present them to the board. Not only these students, but the staff members personify everything that I love about education, Ogden School District, and George Washington. It's a very special school, and these are some very special students. So first, I'd like to welcome up Janet Velasco. She's one of our A Club advocates, and Luis.
Good afternoon. So this is Luis Mendoza. When we started at George Washington, he had very poor attendance and wasn't sure how he felt about graduating. His pattern was to go to class just enough to stay above the red line to avoid getting dropped. He's currently a junior. He has greatly improved from last year and has realized that to be a better father to his 17-month-old daughter, Abriela, he needed to improve his grades. He now wants to graduate and sees it as an important step in starting his adult life. He also feels it's important to set that example for his daughter. This year, his credits have doubled and his grades have gone up. Even when he is sick, he tries to come in to get his work and get caught up. He stays for Turnaround Tuesday and other days to make sure that he is on top of his classes. Once, he even brought Abriela with him when he needed to take care of assignments. She was quite the popular girl at the school. Luis has matured and has learned to be an advocate for himself. He's changed his mindset and has taken the initiative to receive social work services to care for his mental health. He is smart and respectful. He loves his daughter very much and believes God gave her to him. He has worked hard to strain his life for her. When asked about his school interests and classes he liked, he refused to pick a favorite. He is in Achievement Club and participates in the Young Parents Group. He did want to share with you that teachers at George Washington go out of their way to help students beyond just teaching. He has never had teachers like that before. He is grateful for the counseling services offered by the school social worker, and he thinks they are important for students needing help. Luis currently works at Home Depot as a cashier. He spends as much of his free time as he can with Abriela. He likes to take her to the mall to play, watch people, and he loves to watch her dance. His first priority is to graduate. He's not sure what he's going to do after. He plans to continue working and is curious about taking mechanical classes.
Our second student, I'd like to, first of all, welcome up to introduce, Araceli is James Gardner. He's not only our math teacher, but he's a member of our school leadership team as well. So please, James.
All right, we're going to try to hold it together. Okay, so at George Washington, we have our Behavior Standards, which is a RISE. It's an acronym, and Araceli demonstrates all of the things we look for in a student at George Washington High School. She is accountable, so she is so sweet, super smart, but most importantly, she took responsibility for her own learning. Araceli used to not go to school and wasn't passing classes, and she is now getting all As and Bs and is showing up all the time. She would often be found staying after school in my math class to get extra help, which is very rare, and we had a lot of time to go back over the material, and she definitely is accountable and takes responsibility for her learning. She also is very respectful. I haven't had a sweeter or more respectful student in my entire time as a teacher. I taught for 10 years, and she has such a great smile as well. It's my favorite. She's also very involved, so she actively participates in her learning. She asks questions in class, even though she's fairly self-spoken. She took an active role, but not only that, you've also joined the cooking club recently and make some amazing wings and Chinese food, so we like to see that involvement. Well, talk to me after. She also demonstrates being safe. She doesn't get into trouble. She respects her fellow students, and she is definitely excelling. She's a regular contender. She's earned three credits this year and has a GPA of 3.439, which is amazing, given how far you've come. School interests, she is interested in her language arts and math classes. She likes hearing the stories from history class. She was particularly influenced by learning about Malcolm X, who had a strong impression on her, and like I mentioned, she went from getting Fs to getting As and Bs. Other interests, she's also proud of making adult decisions in her life. She is getting a job. She's getting her driver's permit. Currently, she works at Ross as a customer, in the customer service department. She loves cooking and is known for baking an excellent chocolate cake, which I don't know either, so I think you owe us. And she has been learning about plants and wants to start a garden at her home next year. Goals, she plans to graduate from high school and get her driver's license. Afterwards, she would like to go to college to study business and maybe acting. She'd like to start her own business, maybe one that involves clothes and/or makeup, and she'd like to travel to Mexico and Guatemala to visit her family. I understand this maybe is a little bit unusual, but Araceli is asked to say a few words, so go for it.
Okay. I just wanted to say thank you to the George Washington teachers and for my family, too, for just helping me reach my goals and for just being there for me, so thank you.
So our student is also virtual, but he did have the great opportunity of receiving his certificate yesterday over at the Tech College in the post-high program. So we do have a little, here's Armando, so we brought him with us. So we are very excited to announce Armando Baie as the January Post-High Student of the Month. So Armando is one of our students that is attending both the high school and the construction program at the Tech College. Armando had a very, very difficult time last year and was convinced that he was not going to graduate. Like, he didn't want to come to school, was just done with everything, but we finally convinced him to just give it a try this year, and now he's completing his final requirements for his high school diploma, and he's also excelling in the construction program. So Armando is a great example of the amazing partnership that we have between our school district and the Tech College. Many of our post-high students, like Armando, have a very difficult time finding their place in post-high and getting the motivation back to earn their diplomas and finesse their transition skills into adulthood. So the Tech College has definitely helped Armando get back into the groove and is helping him to successfully transition into adulthood. Armando has really stepped up to the challenge of this year and has turned into a role model for all of our other students. He has shown amazing work ethic and maturity this year. Armando will not only walk away as a high school graduate, but will also walk away as a very skilled construction worker. To say we are proud of him is an understatement. Angela has had the privilege of working with Armando for just a couple years, but I've known Armando since Highland Junior High, when he was a pure tutor in my Life Skills class, so it's kind of see him come full circle. And even back then, like, he always stood up for the kids and was really an advocate for our students. So back then and now, Armando really looks out for his classmates and helps others to reach their goals. Armando is on track to graduate in May and will be sporting his Tech College medal for the construction program at graduation. So we're so incredibly proud of Armando and can't wait to see what the future holds for him. And hopefully, Armando is on watching right now, and congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, and we will continue with some more celebrations. We'll invite Ms. Haney, and I think some other teachers as well, Mr. Thompson, and anyone else that you've got with you to...
No.
No, okay.
So this first one's for Chet Colvin, right?
Okay, yep.
Yeah, so I'm going to have Coach Thompson come up here. Chet, will you come on up? Chet Colvin, he's an amazing student and a student athlete, I should say, and he was selected by the Deseret News as the Humanitarian of the Year, and I thought there's probably no one better than for Coach Thompson to get up and say a few words about Chet.
All right. How you doing, man? You look good. You look better than me tonight. Yeah, a lot of things I could say about Chet. As I was thinking over here, maybe the way I want to introduce him is that recently in the football class, we test, you know, a battery of lifts, and we kind of divide it by your weight to see who's the pound-for-pound, the strongest kid in the football program. And Chet, again, tested as pound-for-pound the strongest kid in the football program, which surely helped him be, you know, a team captain and offensive MVP and an all-state But Chet's greatest strength is his ability to love and serve others. So similar to like they do the NFL, Man of the Year with Walter Payton, this year was the first year they decided to do that with the Deseret News, and they send an email out to all the coaches if there's someone that fits this description, who's someone who serves the community, to please send, you know, a bio and some, a few things about him. So I was proud to do that about Chet. Things that separated him and the way that he serves, first of all, he misses three weeks every June. He's going to go do it again. This last time he went to Mexico, I think he's going to Panama this year. He helped build a community care center for senior citizens for three weeks straight, building a home there. But it doesn't end there with Chet. Chet's on our team council, has been an integral part of... And we started a tradition at Ogden High where we bring Christmas to, you know, all the special needs kids at Ogden High, and presenting them with a gift and saying, "Merry Christmas," and Chet's been instrumental and kind of been my right-hand man in that, and that makes me very proud of Chet. On a personal note, I struggle with some things with my health. Chet, now I've kind of become close. Last year, Chet volunteered to be my TA and helps me every day in class, and people may don't know this about Chet, but he had a big health scare and has had some adversity in his life as well. And to see the courage and the grace and the tremendous positive attitude that Chet, you know, had through that, and we've had some shared conversations, and he's really held up to me, but a great example to me. So to me, Chet, I can't think of anyone more deserving of this award. Definitely helped Ogden shine and represents, you know, all the 3A schools in the state as the Humanitarian of the Year Award, and, you know, we talk on our football team that, you know, our mantra per se is an acronym as well, "Family, forget about me, I love you," and Chet does that every day. Proud to call him, you know, one of my student athletes, and, you know, hope my son grows up just like him, so love you, Chet. Thanks, Coach.
Everybody, you all take one little step back here. One, two.
Okay. I'm lucky enough, I get to announce the U.S. Presidential Scholars for our school. This program was established in 1964 to honor the nation's most distinguishing graduating seniors, and each year, students from all over the country are nominated. Seventy students in Utah were chosen thus far, and four are from Weber County. Two of those are from Ogden High School, which is pretty cool, right? So two from Ogden, we have Lucy Ballard, come on up, Lucy. And then we have Brayden Reeves, and we'll do Brayden right after. I saw Brayden come in, I think, yes, okay, perfect. So you get to just stand here, right? And I get to tell them all the great things about you. These are some teacher comments about Lucy, and I was reading through them, and I was thinking, they can't be more right on about this. Lucy's a go-getter, always ready for a challenge, she consistently pushes herself, and her progress shows that, her drive and desire. She's a student that shows up on time, she's always where she should be, she helps others, she works hard, she appreciates learning new skills and shares that excitement with others. Our education system would be unmatched if we had a school full of Lucy Ballards. Lucy is a person of very strong character. In my professional career, I have rarely come across a student or employee that shows the amount of discipline that Lucy does. And this is from her IB biology teacher, and he said, "She has chosen to challenge herself at every turn, whether it's academics, student government," she's our student body president, by the way, "the environmental club, and even being an active part of our girls' basketball team. She has shown incredible self-discipline in her ability to excel in each of these areas. I have worked with many students in the IB program who have decided that this program alone is too difficult or too much work. Lucy has succeeded in this program while actively leading our student body. On top of all of this, Lucy has held employment outside of the school. I cannot say enough good about how difficult this is and about how much discipline it takes. As made apparent by her participation in the environmental club and student government, she is committed to the environment." And one of the ways I know this, because Lucy was up for another scholarship award and she came in to an interview, and she has started her own, she's an entrepreneur, right? And tell me again, it's the trailer, so she grows a garden. You tell them.
Called Ogden Produce Company, and it's hydroponic produce for local restaurants that we grow.
So she has started that business already, so on top of everything else, her teacher said, "Regardless of the background of the student, they know that Lucy is caring and approachable and will hear them out." And this person just said, "I consider myself lucky to teach Lucy and to be a part of her story." And quite honestly, we just, we know you're gonna do great things wherever you go. The best thing about Lucy is she does care about her own academics and her own growth, but I think more than that, she cares about other people. Super proud that she's been selected as a Presidential Scholar. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm sure Coach Thompson wants to stop.
Yeah.
Okay, and so Brayden Reeves, come on up. And Brayden just finished up with state swimming, right? We, I feel like as a team, we did some great things down at the BYU State Tournament this last weekend, so again, not only is Brayden doing well in the classroom, but he excels outside of the classroom as well. Some of his teachers and quite a few put their two cents in because of how great you are. They said, "Brayden is an awesome student. He is curious and he works hard. He is a positive influence to all of those around him, and he loves to share with our class the cool math videos he's found or the connections he's making with the content. He is involved in many activities and excels in all of them. While Brayden came to me at the beginning of AP Calculus with deep understanding, he didn't take that for granted. He has worked hard for his achievements. He is a great advocate for himself and others and is always asking questions to further his understanding and knowledge. I'm so lucky to have him in class and I'm so proud to see him recognized in this way." Another teacher said, "Brayden Reeves has been one of my favorite students because of how open and inquisitive he always is while in class with me. He pushes his knowledge acquisition beyond what is just prescribed by the curriculum and always seeks to clarify his understanding. That, along with him being a very kind and helpful part of every class, makes him one of the best I've seen. He is certainly deserving of this honor." So congratulations, Brayden. Okay, and then I need Zane Rodriguez to come on up. So while he's on his way up here, I'll tell you, Zane has earned academic high honors from College Board. This is a national recognition for students who have a 3.5 GPA or higher and have excelled in the PISA or earned a 3 or higher on two, at least two AP exams. So he's doing very well in the classroom, and his teachers have wonderful things to say about them. They say, "Zane is the best kind of smart and funny. Anytime he raises his hand, I know his question or comment is going to be helpful to everyone, and it's also going to make me laugh. I look forward to it every time. Zane is an amazing young man with a keen mind, a strong work ethic, and an exceptional demeanor. There is no doubt that Zane has a bright future ahead. Normal high school seniors typically take advantage of their lighter class load by finding ways to relax. However, it is a tribute to his character that Zane is currently doing two separate internships in order to thoroughly explore some of his many available career options. The younger students he tutors adore and appreciate him for his willingness to spend time with them in helping to reach their academic goals." Someone else just said, "Zane's one of the best. He's humble, he's diligent, and he's kind to everyone. He is always willing to work hard in class and is a great learning partner to whomever he is assigned to work with. I wish I had more students like that. I am writing this to say he is fantastic, he is respectful of others, always willing to share his thoughts, and he never misses class. The thing that I admire the most is his humility. He quietly goes about being a good person to all every day. He is mature beyond his years, and I can't wait to see all of the wonderful things he is going to do with his life." So congratulations, Zane.
So I was thinking, as we've been able to celebrate a few of our students for two months and the various Presidential and Humanitarian Scholars, that when I was in high school, it was three o'clock school, and then I just went home, watched TV, did some homework. And you guys are amazing, the stuff that you do, extracurriculars, jobs, taking care of children. I'm impressed. Great job. So now, speaking of great, we'll turn time over to Mr. Lunsford from the Prince Blatt Mount Fort to give us a presentation on great things happening at his school.
I've cleared rooms pretty fast before, but this is probably my best, so. All right, well, we are happy to be here. I am happy to be here to be able to talk to you about our positive school culture at Mount Fort. I've brought with me a team of teachers because really, they're the ones that are really boots-on-the-ground implementing this work for us. So I have Kim Baker, who teaches science for us, who's been a long time here in the district. We were able to get her from T.O. Smith up to the junior high. Cicely Chamberlain, who teaches ESL Health, LIA, many other things or whatever we need to do. And then Michael Cunningham, who has started with us this year as our seventh-grade math teacher. So first, what I, as whenever I think about school culture or think about our school, really what we want is for our students to achieve and to excel, and everything that we do and implement is for that. So I just wanted to share some academic results that I feel are really tied to our school culture. We, according to our, with our RISE test scores, which is our rise at the levels, in our seventh-grade ELA RISE scores, we had an eight percentage point increase from the 2019 to the 2021 year. With our seventh-grade math scores, they increased 16 percentage points. And our seventh-grade RISE scores increased 21 percentage points in that time. And so again, right, this is the time that through the pandemic where we were able to have students come to school and still achieve and increase from where we were previously with it. Also, we like to really look at our WEADA, which is our test that tests the proficiency of our students' English, who are English language learners. And so these numbers on this table represent the percentage of students that showed growth on that score in the different categories. There's the four categories in the WEADA test, so you can see as the breakdown with our grades, like you can look over, in our ninth grade, 82% of our students had growth in their writing score, 77% in their reading, 46% in the speaking, 56% in the listing for our ninth grade. So we just feel that's been a huge focus for us, is to have our students really excel with their language and their academic language, and to have our English language learners achieve at a high level, right along with their native English speakers. This is a phrase that I've come across with education Ubuntu that for the last couple of years, we've worked on as a staff, and to really understand the phrase, right? It's "I am because you are," right? "We're there because the students are there." The students are there because we're there. It's really just that, that really community feeling that we're trying to build and continue to build at the fort. So that's a phrase that we like to keep in mind as we continue. Our mantra, our mantra at the fort, professionalism, perseverance, and progress is something we try and instill with all of our students. We want them to be professional, we want them to persevere, and we want them to show progress. And so that's really at the heart as we continue this presentation of really at the heart to have our students show this. And so with our school culture, we've had this focus of really bringing our positive school culture, just not as a school-wide thing, but into our classrooms. And so we'll continue from there. Kim, I hope this is, she might have to stand off to the side, I don't see a step.
I'm gonna stand on this side. So with our school culture, where do we begin? I think anyone who's ever walked into our building feels that there's just a positive vibe about it, and it's a good feel. But where does that begin? With all the great, you know, I'd say great leadership that we have is good, and it helps, and all the programs that we have helps, but it has to start with the teachers and the workers, the lunch ladies at the door in the morning, greeting every student. As the moment they walk in that door, it sets the tone for the day for them and for us. So with all of us in our classrooms, mine personally, I greet my students at the door and acknowledging them by name, letting them know that I recognize that they're there for the day, and as I said, our lunch ladies, workers, everybody from the moment our students walk into the school, that's felt, that it's important that they're there. And going a little bit further in our classrooms, we have school-wide superhero points that we give our students. We want our students to achieve and excel in all areas, but we know they do that in different ways, and we celebrate them in different ways. One way with our superhero points that we give is that for being safe, and whether it's in the classroom, in the hallway, that's important. We recognize it. Being united, letting them know, as Mr. Lunsford said in the beginning, "We're in this together," that there's a common goal for all of us to try to strive to reach together, and we recognize our students for doing that. Being professional, again, teaching them and helping them to be professional, recognize when they reach those moments, and being engaged. With that, they earn these points, and then they have a way to celebrate that on Fridays, to buy things from our school store that they like, that they could use, that they want. So it's just something to celebrate them in different ways, and they can all obtain that. And fast passes. As we know, we'd like all of our students, as much as they can achievement-wise, to get As, but sometimes that student who's getting that D in a class, that's their A. You know, they've come from that bottom, and they're working hard to get there. working hard to get there. It's not the same as that person who walked in with an A, right? So recognizing what our students do academically and giving them fast passes and letting them know, "I'm saw. I, you know, I know you made this difference." And we do this in different ways within our classrooms that we can celebrate those students to do that. And we do that through that professionalism, perseverance, and progress, all of our students.
All right. I think I can see over this. Are we good? All right. So my name is Cicely Chamberlain. I teach health ESL Latinos in Action. I do a little credit recovery as well, maybe a little PE some years. I'm kind of all over the place. So just like she talked about, we have a ton of incentives and things like that to help our kids be successful. But we also do a lot of other things and other supports for our students that they need. The first one I want to talk about is something that we call CHAMP. It's a school-wide tool that we use. It's an acronym that we use, and it really does work for about 95% of our students. Every teacher uses it, and CHAMP basically is an acronym that stands for just certain behaviors we want to see. We have a CHAMP routine for every single activity in our class. They have a CHAMP routine for when I'm up talking. They have a CHAMP routine for passing in papers. They have a CHAMP routine for bellwork. They know exactly the expectations because we want to just always make sure that our kids know the expectations upfront. There's nothing more frustrating to a teenager when they get in trouble for something they didn't know was a rule. So we set them up for success by laying it all out there right from the beginning. And when they do mess up, because, you know, they're like 13, so that's going to happen, we just reteach it. We don't get angry. We reteach it. Even if we reteach it again, we're going to reteach it again. So that's been something really successful in our school. Some of the other supports for our kiddos that need just a little bit more support than those CHAMP expectations, chat. We have an amazing chat team at Mount Fort. We use check-in, check-out, and A Club, so I'm going to talk about those supports really quickly. Our chat team, we have a team of people at our school. We have our assistant principal, a counselor, all these people that are there to help our kids be successful. And we decide who's going to be spoken about by write-ups or by a parent referral, and they'll meet. And one of the first things they do is they email all their teachers. They say, "Hey, what are you seeing in class? What's working for this kid in your class? What successes have you seen? Or what problems do you see? Like, when do they start to go off the rails?" And we give them their feedback before the meeting even happens. So then when they meet, they already have done some research, and they already know this kiddo. And then they make a plan. And those plans are, it could be a number of things. Oh, you're fine. You're fine. I messed up. It could be a number of things. You can see there, it says a 2x10, a three-peer goal setting. Those are all relationship-building strategies that we have. And they'll be assigned to a teacher to do with those. Whatever teacher they feel like would either be the most successful, or sometimes it's a teacher that they know needs to build that relationship. And so that's always a really like cool experience to do with a kid. Then also, it might go to a check-in, check-out, which I'll explain later, and possibly youth court. This is a copy of our check-in, check-out. This is amazing for teachers like me because you get the kid who will pick this up in the morning. They take it to every single teacher. They're responsible for it. They have to take it to every teacher. They give it to the teacher at the beginning of class, and we give them a zero, one, or two for every single one of those categories throughout the class. And then at the end, I get to sit down and have a conversation with that student. And I get to talk about, "You did so great with this. You were on time. You did all your work, so you got a two for this." And if I gave them a one for something, we have that conversation, and I'll say, "Hey, why did, why do you think I gave you a one? Or what do you think you should score here?" And it is shocking how honest they are. They're like, "Ah, I know I kept putting my hood on. I'm sorry. I was cold. Sorry," right? So it's always a good conversation, and it helps me build that relationship. And then they take it to whoever they're checking out with at the end of the day, and they get their total. And this is cool because it's tied to a goal for them. So a lot of the times, it'll be like, "Hey, if you get 80% all week long, we'll pick up your favorite treat for you." Or the biggest motivation is, "You don't have to fill this form out anymore if you can get 80% for so long." These are very effective. Our last one is A Club. This is a tier-three intervention. These are for the kiddos that need the most attention. The kids who get put in A Club, it's determined before the school year even starts, and they're based on three criteria: grades, behavior, and attendance. So kids who struggle in all three of those areas get selected to be in this A Club class. They're also assigned champion teachers, so it's usually one from each core that they kind of get a bond with throughout the year that helps them through, and it's their, their advocate. And they also get homework nights that help them with those teachers there. Those teachers stay after three homework nights a term, and they stay there, and they help get their grades up in their classes, but also all their classes. And if you look at this data, it is crazy how it's changed our school. I think the A Club is, I've been working at Mount Fort for close to 10 years now, and so I've got to see a little bit before and after. And I, if there is one program, I never want to lose. It's this one. If you look, the gray is, like them in eighth grade, they had 741 behavior write-ups. Ninth grade, only 390. It was a drastic decrease after being in that program. Failing grades, as eighth graders altogether, they had 314 Fs. Ninth grade, only 135. And then the green is, they were down to 73 after summer school. So it's just so huge having those supports. There's so many people backing them, and so many teachers that have their backs, but it's just so effective. Thank you, and I'll turn the time over to coming in.
Oh, sure. Back on chat, when you said there are a teacher is assigned, is it one of their teachers, or is it any teacher in the school?
Yes. It'll be one of their teachers, and it's not always a teacher. Sometimes it's a caseworker. It's whoever they feel like would be the most successful, meeting with that student, having a bond, and having someone that they could rely on. And they sit down, and they make goals together. Or there's also the 2x10. All that is, this is really cool. You just, you talk to the kid for two minutes about anything, not really school-related, and pretty soon the kid realizes like, "Oh, this adult cares about me," and they, they just care about me as a person. It's not even just about school. They care about me, and that's another relationship builder. Exactly. Yeah.
All right. I don't know why they saved the rookie for the last, but we'll, we'll deal with it. We'll handle it. My name is Michael Cunningham. This is my first year teaching, brand new off the streets, and so Mr. Lunsford thought it'd be great. But he bring me along for this little presentation, and I actually appreciate that. Thank you. But as a first-year teacher and not really having a formal classroom setting, understanding, to be able to have that classroom management is super critical for me. And so coming into the fort, having those veteran teachers reach out to me and say, "Hey, this is what we do. This is how we do it," and allow me to collaborate and have insights with them and have constructive conversations, saying, "Hey, this is what works for me." You, as a new teacher, you have to build that relationship. It's going to be a little bit of a struggle. And halfway through the year, I haven't mastered it yet, but I'm getting there. The reports that I'm starting to establish with my students, I'm seeing affect their schoolwork in a positive way. As has been stated before, having students come in that don't really have any desire to come to school, or not even really like math, to have them nominate me for the Golden Bear Award as a first-year teacher makes me extremely happy, makes me feel like I have reached them to a point where they're excited about school, they're excited about math. And it's because I have these supports around me that I'm, be able to be effective. Not only the veteran teachers, but I, we've got a great administration, Mr. Lunsford, Mr. Good, or Ms. Kudif and Ms. Ledger, always there to have a conversation, to explain to me my grow points, my glow points, things I'm doing well, and things to work on. So, you know, I really look forward to that opportunity to have the CTMs, to have those collaborations with them, to, you know, just to further my understanding of what classroom management is and how we, how to do it. Not only that, we've got an amazing instructional coach that's there. That's my right hand. Every week, she's in my classroom, gives me great feedback, and just allows me to, to mess up, if you will, to make mistakes so that I can learn. Because, you know, I want my, my classroom and my students to have that success that Ms. Chamberlain just showed you, and that growth in their grades. And if I can establish that classroom management, peace, as a seventh grader, then ninth grade, they're going to excel. They're ready for that next step. And so my three pillars of support are my veteran teachers, my administration, and my instructional coach. That is going to help shape me so that I can shape the lives of the students that I get in my classroom. So thank you for this opportunity to stand. I'm super nervous, and I talk with my hands a lot, but I am, I'm super excited for this opportunity. So thank you.
Okay. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but congratulations. I just think that's awesome. And I get nervous too up here, just seeing.
All right. Thank you.
So, great job, Mount Fort on the... My daughter went to Mount Fort. That's how I ended up here. PTA president, came to a meeting, and they said, "Hey, do you ever think about running for school board?" 18 years later. So, thank you so much. Great achievements happening at the fort. Thanks.
Well, we'll excuse them because I don't know if they'll try and veto the business administrator contract. I don't know. We better go.
So now we'll have some time to an area that's dear to my heart, celebrating the arts. So our district art supervisor, Carrie Maxon.
Thank you, Vice President, and thank you, board members, for always letting me come back. I'm, we have a couple of firsts today, which I'm super excited about. We have Ogden High School artwork around us and ceramics. I will say there are a couple of teacher pieces in here, but you know, the student artwork, it's hard to tell the difference. He's such a good teacher. So Heidi Gardner is our visual art teacher up here, and Bruce Burningham is the ceramics teacher and photography. One thing, every time I talk to these teachers, they are so passionate about their students. And they had four students make it into all-state art show, and next month, we'll celebrate those students. But I just wanted to thank them. It takes a lot of extra effort to get the artwork here and, and all the timing, so I really appreciate that. Another first is, I am going to show a two-and-a-half-minute video of the elementary music teachers. We will start with Janet Epperson in first-grade class. She integrates literature quite a bit. This is the Little Red Handbook, and they're doing rhythms to it. So you'll wonder why they're moving a lot. It's because there's some drumming and little rhythmic instruments. And then you'll see Ashley Too Good at Hillcrest. Oh, let's see where, well, it says the schools. I, I think it was Odyssey. And then Ashley has started a choir club. The school is thrilled about it. She did a concert in December with the kiddos, and they set up chairs. They had to double the seating because so many parents came. They were so excited to have this little concert. And so there's a little snippet of that. They, too, are trained in teaching orf instruments, and those are those little xylophones that you see. So the kids will be playing those. So she's bridged her daytime teaching with this after-school club. And then you'll see Adam Kozlowski at Taylor Canyon. He invited his sixth graders to come after school and get recorded. And so that is very darling. He's playing with them, and Adam did make this video, so I want to thank him for that. Now I'm going to try, Jared, to do this all the right way. Very good technique on some of those guitars. Wasn't that great? And Ashley was in the background playing her guitar, accompanying the choir. So thank you very much for letting me share today.
Okay. Thank you, Carrie, very much. Now we have our consent calendar, and I believe everyone's had the opportunity to review the items there. Do you have any questions or comments? Board member Richards?
I would like to move 9A, Architectural Services to replace the roof at Heritage Elementary, and 9B, Install Electronic Sign at Odyssey Elementary to the consent calendar.
So we have an amended, an amendment for that, yes, motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so the motion is made by Board Member Richard, seconded by Board Member Barker. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Board Member Anderson. Okay, now it's on to the superintendent's report. For the consent calendar. Awesome.
I thought the move was to move the items to the consent calendar. You want to move and approve the consent calendar, correct?
Yeah, except I just noticed that a couple of items we did want to discuss. Because as questions have come up this week. So the motion is to move those two items to the consent calendar?
Right.
Okay. Thank you. So I know Board Member already had a question about the child nutrition facility. Did you get those answered?
Yes.
That question?
Yes. They did a great job replying to all those questions.
Okay.
And so it's just a preliminary at this point.
Unfortunately, I did not. Unfortunately, I did not see the reply. So, are you able to explain what a commercial shower curtain is to us? Because we were thinking, "Let's go to Home Depot," so...
So, just... So, in response to her question, I just pointed out that that estimate that BDK put together is exactly that. So, we asked them, we told them generally what we wanted in this building, and they went through and basically did a pretty comprehensive, "This is our best guess of what these things will cost." Included in there were the commercial toiletries, which included the shower curtain, and they showed that that, you know, that it was, what was it, a couple hundred dollars?
Yeah, $2.66.
You know? And all my response is that that is just an estimate. BDK does not do that. And at the end of the day, the architect will specify everything that goes into the building, including the shower curtain, or whatever it is. And then the contractor will bid on that, whoever gets it, and they will build the building, and it will include the shower curtain. We really, at the end of the day, won't know what that costs unless we say, "What did that cost?" And normally, we don't get into those weeds. But I will just say that most commercial-grade things are more expensive. And they build these buildings to last 50 years, and I don't know what Chris was assuming in the cost of if it took labor to hang the thing and all this other stuff. I don't know. It was an interesting question, I thought, but that's my response.
We'll have to know the total at the end.
Yeah. At the end of the day, we're gonna spend about six or seven million dollars on the building, and the shower curtain won't matter.
So, did anyone else have questions regarding the Child Nutrition Center? Or the proposed Child Nutrition Center? Okay. Swimming pool proposal discussion. I know there were questions about punch passes. I think Board Member Anderson...
Yeah, I sent out a real comprehensive answer to all the questions in a separate email this afternoon. Unless you have questions about my responses, I'm happy to address those, if you have. So, I think the particular question about the punch pass was, we haven't done the 20 and the 40 before, or we haven't done the 40, we've done the 20. Punch passes are interchangeable, so Susan couldn't go, but her daughter wanted to go. She could give the punch pass to her daughter. And the punch passes, from what I've been told, the 20 punch, punch pass, has been the most popular pass that we've sold. So, they just thought, "Why don't we do a 40? We won't have to renew it so often, and we'll see how it goes." If nobody buys them, then it's no big deal, but it's a little less hassle in that case. I think there was a question about non-resident passes. So, we don't have a non-resident rate for the entrance fee into the pool, nor the punch passes. And so, that's why they didn't go anywhere. We just have never had them. So, we clarified that. There was a question about, did someone take a cut in pay? It looked like we cut the rate by $2 an hour. And the reality is, that's a brand-new position. And the way that would have been paid on the old schedule, it would have been at a higher rate. But since it's a new position, nobody's taking any pay cut. We're just, "This is the rate that we need to have it." And it's a little less than it probably would have been under the new schedule, but no one was paid under the old schedule anyway. So, I think that took care of that one.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the pools and the proposed fees? Okay.
So, just to clarify, the... So, the employee was free, then $100 was for one person, and then it's 20 additional on.
Yeah, that was... Yeah, our question was, "What about..." We were gonna make the entrance to the pool free for employees, and then the line after that said, "For additional family members, $100." So, it could be a spouse, it could be a child. So, the employee's free, the annual pass for the spouse or child's $100. But if there are more, let's say you got your spouse and two kids, then you'd pay $100 for the spouse and $20 for each of the kids. So, it's a pretty good, pretty good thing, and I think a nice benefit for employees. Yeah, and there was another question about seniors. Do we have a discount for them? I think Arlene had a question about that. So, the... We don't have a different rate for the seniors, but there are a couple of things that you probably didn't know about, that I didn't know about until I talked to Darwin today. So, Medicare actually has a benefit, a fitness benefit of some sort. And if they choose to use that in, like, the pool facility, Medicare pays for that.
It's called Silver Sneakers.
Something like that. And so, we actually get more from the reimbursement from Medicare than...
Should we up the price?
So, we don't, we don't have to charge them because it's kind of paid through that. And then the city has some passes that they have for people that use the Marshall White Center, or used it when it was still up and going. And they were paying like a dollar less than what we charge. So, we honor those passes for those people, and the city actually throws in the extra dollar to us. So, it works out well, and those seniors get a good benefit, so...
Most fitness centers accept Silver Sneakers also, so...
Do you have to have Silver Sneakers on to get in?
No, I don't really do. Does it look like I... So, I know there are questions about the NICE Health, the proposal to partner with NICE Health. And... So, I do, I have a couple of questions that have been relayed to me from some of our educators. So, the $36 a month is charged whether they use the services or not. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's like a membership, like our Teladoc. So, we pay that for... We need to have a conversation at some point about, or do we want to expand up past those that are already insurance-eligible? Right now, it's for insurance-eligible people enrolled in the insurance plan. We talked a little bit about maybe expanding it beyond that. So, yes, it's $36 a month.
And I think you asked about Teladoc, didn't you, Amber? So, would we continue that?
So, this would replace Teladoc. NICE is like Teladoc on steroids. I mean, so, everything Teladoc did, this NICE will do, but instead of talking to the physician face-to-face, they may come and see you and help you with whatever it is you got going, so they could check you out, do a strep test, check your blood pressure for you, or do an X-ray, draw blood, all kinds of stuff.
So, and the 802 number that we saw?
It was a sample.
Oh, just a sample.
Oh, that was just, there was a question about what kind of reporting they did. And yeah, I clarified in my memo to you that that's just a sample of the report, so it's a very transparent thing. We will get reports regularly about how much it's getting used and how much it saves us by the use, so...
Board Member Blair, did you have other questions that...
I asked someone, he answered everyone. Thank you. I wondered why the March 1st, and he explained that he wanted to have it rolled out by April 1st. Because I was wondering...
Yeah, it will take about six weeks, I think, to get geared up.
Would it be started with the new insurance?
To get it rolled out. So, yeah, and just to be clear, it's not, it's separate from our health insurance plan. And what it will do is, more and more people participate, and obviously, there are fewer claims that are gonna hit our insurance site, and that's, that's where the big savings is. Yeah, we're gonna spend $36 a month here, but we anticipate that we're gonna get that back, plus on the health benefit side, through prescription savings. People will be able to get prescriptions at no cost. Amber had a question about how that work. They'll either mail it to you if you need it. You don't have to pay. If you have to go to a pharmacy to get it, it'll be ready and waiting for you at no cost. It's gonna be a really great benefit.
I did have a question, and you did answer this, but I just want you to kind of clarify. It says, "Many employers," which would be us, "would opt to offer a plan with a higher deductible than they previously offered before adding NICE to their, to lower the insurance premium." How's it... I don't know how that's gonna be received, you know, I mean...
So, we aren't, we aren't changing anything with our health plan.
Okay, all right.
Nothing changes with the health plan. We're still gonna offer the plans we have.
And they will have choices.
We're not gonna be changing deductibles or anything else. This is just, if you choose, you can use this, and if you use this, it's gonna save you money over here.
Okay, because they said some, some will offer to do that, to offset the cost of the $36 per... Okay.
No, we're not probably gonna do that.
Okay, they'll still have choices of which plan?
Absolutely. Nothing changed on that site.
Board President Zundel has her hand up.
Yeah, I was just wondering, how many employees do we have enrolled in our insurance?
Around 725 or 750.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Board Member Richards?
Yeah, I was just wondering, how many health professionals will we have available to our employees?
Enough to cover the, whatever they need. They will adjust that as needed. Right now, they've got coverage, and as, I don't know if you saw the map that I sent out, and it showed a sliver of North Ogden that they didn't have in their coverage thing, and they've promised that that's gonna be covered, so we don't have to worry about that. So, I think the numbers will depend on the utilization. They will have as many as they need to make sure we get the coverage we need.
Okay, thank you.
Board Member Albert?
So, one question I have is, is there an opt-in option? So, let's say the employee already has all these benefits from their spouse, so instead of us, our district paying for that employee and their family, is there an opt-in, or is it automatic that they'll all have it?
So, the idea is that we would pay this as part of our, it's a benefit that we offer to our employees, and no, it wouldn't be an opt-in. We're just gonna provide this benefit. I think we're gonna want to have this conversation about how can we make this available to employees who may not be insurance-eligible, because it'll be a great, it'll be a great benefit to them. I know Ken Crawford reached out to me and said, "Hey, this would be a great thing for our lunch ladies." So, it works out. If you do the math, it's about 25 cents an hour to provide this benefit to employees. So, if we could find a way to make this just, if you come to work at Ogden, this is one of the great things you have. I think HR's excited to have it for a recruiting tool. I presume you got a letter from Noel about, she was supposed to write you guys a letter. I don't know if you didn't get it, but she was supposed to. You'd asked for it. If you didn't, we'll make sure you get it. But I just think it's gonna be a game changer for us. It'll, like I said, I've been repetitive, so...
Zane, you probably already answered this, but do we have a deadline? Or can we hop in on this program anytime during the year?
So, we can hop in anytime.
Okay.
And we can hop out anytime. We're not contracted for any, you know, it's not like we're committed for years or anything. It's kind of a month-to-month thing. As long as we pay for the benefit, they'll provide that service. We will benefit greater by more participation in the program, which is why I want to take six weeks to get geared up, to get this thing rolled out, to get our employees educated in, "Hey, this is now available for you," and help them understand the great advantages that's gonna be to them if they do that. They will save money if they use this program. The district will save money if we use this program.
Do you happen to know if there are either other school districts or businesses in Utah that are using NICE Health?
Yeah, and so, not school districts. We would be the first school district. But I think we have Dave Burbidge online. Dave, can you give us an idea how many clients you have in Utah right now using NICE?
Yeah.
Like nationally, they've got like 450?
Yeah.
450 employers across the US, in the state of Wisconsin and in Minnesota. I think there are around 65 school districts that are using it. In the, obviously, in Utah, that's not...
He's online.
What's that?
They have several, which is why they have the coverage area the way they got it.
So, and then the city of Lehigh has used it with great success over the last two years. We have, in the last...
David, are you muted?
I'm trying not...
I can hear.
Do you see me? Can you hear me?
I can hear David.
Yeah, I'm here. Okay, so the question was, "How many, how many Utah clients do we have?" I assume we've got a few since we've got coverage all the way up the last front.
Yeah, there's actually eight different employers that have picked it up in the last, well, with us, in the last three months. Compared to that, we've had the city of Lehigh, they've used it quite a bit, and they've had a ton of success. The expansion, as soon as Ogden pulls the trigger, we're actually gonna see an additional provider signed to work specifically with Ogden City School District. So, the biggest issue that we've seen is the retention and recruiting aspect is a big deal. Employers, we just haven't had anybody that really took a look into this and said, "No," because they see the obvious advantages of it. Being able to offer to employees who are outside of the benefits plan is a big deal, too, to say, "Hey, you may not have anything, but you have an option for at least primary care and then access to free generic insurance."
So, I don't know if he would, okay, here, he was wondering, so, what's the usage, you know? Fifty percent of the employees that are insured are used in these services.
Yeah, do you have any idea of the utilization by Lehigh City? Or how much do we have?
We're told it's between 18 to 25% depending on the quarter. And as you've seen, the reports, there is a huge difference in the profitability of the plan. When you get to that 15% corridor, you start saving a ton of money. When you can get 25% utilization, you're, you're going to save a ton of money. And, you know, how do we do that? Well, that's through the engagement consultants that'll work with us through NICE. They'll obviously do a ton of, you know, the, the information, materials that are, that are sent out to the employees, and then also an engagement strategy to make sure that we have as much education that's being sent to the employees as possible. And it, that can look any way you want it to look. Where we're sending out, you know, eight different individuals that are presenting to each of your employees. We can also talk about a, an enticement strategy to say, hey, you know, there, you can save premium if you use NICE. Obviously, the cost savings of not having to pay a co-pay, plus not having to pay for your scripts is a big deal. You know, just, just put this in perspective. One of our employees uses NICE where she was having to deal with an ongoing chronic issue that was costing her $60 in scripts every month. She went to NICE, worked with the provider, and they prescribed the script that ended up being on the, the pharmacy list. It saved her the $60 a month, plus once a quarter when they have to come and do a blood draw, they come to her house, it doesn't cost her co-pay, she doesn't have to take off time at work. Actually, we'll meet her in the evening at her home and do the blood dry, quarterly blood draw, making sure that the script, that the medications are set correctly. But the overall savings are significant, you know, for so many different, different diagnoses. It's, we've used it, I've, I told the board in the last meeting that we had about an experience that I had, just with my son. The facilitation that this provides is, it really, like Zane said, it's a game changer.
Just as an example, like, we, we have about 28% participation in teledoc.
Which, which, by the way, is really high.
$1,000 last year.
What did he say about?
Go ahead, Dave.
That teledoc participation is fantastic. It is so high. We average between 10 and 12% on most of our work. I have no doubt that you folks will do a great job of, of communicating with this with your employees in participation with, with us and with NICE. If you've got 28% participation on your teledoc right now, we're going to get, and, and the reality too is that there's still co-pay with teledoc. With this, there is no co-pay. And the initial interaction with NICE is the same as teledoc, except you don't pay a co-pay. And then if it ends up that they need a provider to come to their home, that's all facilitated, it's scheduled. It is, it really is a smooth process.
Anybody else have notes?
I did quite a bit of homework on this. I, I called a nurse that I know.
Okay. I've got it on when I'm not supposed to, and I don't have it on when I'm supposed to. Okay. I called a friend that was a nurse, that is a nurse, and she was a nursing supervisor at the University of Utah. And she, she said that she can see this becoming the trend in healthcare. She says it sounds wonderful. It would take a lot of the burden off of the hospitals. We're not just saving money, but she said, the only issue she could see is the, when they do the home visits. She said, they're having trouble staffing nurses and clinicians in the hospitals. So she says, I hope, you know, that during cold and flu season, that you don't get hit really hard and they can't get out to you. So I mean, you don't see that becoming a problem.
You know, you have any concerns or issues so far this year? I mean, I, I, I think they ramp up as they.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So I, I'm confident it's not going to be a problem. If they don't get the key, they'll get there in the next five minutes.
It's a two-hour.
I mean, it's like.
It's a dominoes, it's 30 minutes.
I think it was a two-hour window or something.
Well, and one big issue with, with NICE is that you're going to have consistency within providers, because once you establish a relationship, and for us, for, for my son, he's, he's special needs, he, he really has an issue with developing a relationship with different providers, and he's had so many over his lifetime. In the last three months, he has his specific provider that he's very comfortable with. And because of the, the system that exists within NICE, he can see the same person. The same person's come out three times to, to see him. And that's the difference between teledoc and NICE, is that you'll have the option to engage with the same provider because they're employed by NICE. They're not jumping on. Teledoc actually has this open system that says, well, if you have a few minutes, a doctor can take calls for a half an hour, and you kind of get thrown to the next person up in the queue. That's not the case with NICE. They're, they have their list of providers, and your folks, I anticipate, will get really comfortable with specific providers and have that good primary care relationship with one individual if they choose to do it.
Okay.
So I just want to make a comment. I made a phone call to NICE today and spoke with one of the nurses. She stayed on the phone with me for like a half an hour, and I asked her so many questions. And one thing that really touched me is I asked her, I said, Kay, I'm health care provider as well. How do you feel this is compared to traditional medical care? And she just was like, you know, we give the best care, and this model allows them to really give that care. And I just really liked that personally, so I just wanted to share that, that I asked her a ton of questions, but that was one that I just felt, it was important to share.
Thank you. Anyone else have comments or questions?
This nurse that I talked to, she said she's almost been running one of these herself, just in the neighborhood, because everybody calls her because she's the nurse in the neighborhood. And she has to peek in people's ears, and she has to peek in people's throats. And she said, my goodness, I've been out doing this, and this is exactly what, you know, because people felt comfortable with her, and they'd call her up, and she'd run over to their homes. And she said, I can see this, you know, being a great thing, so.
Jennifer, did you have your hand up?
Yes, a few times. So just to clarify for everybody, because there's been a lot of conversation, there's been a couple of questions, but I think.
Why do I not hear?
You can't hear me?
Why would my phone have anything to do with it?
Can you hear me now? Jen, we can't hear you. Okay, well. I don't know what else to do. Can you hear me now?
Jen, you're unmuted. You're not. Go ahead and talk, see if we can hear you now.
Keep talking.
She said I'm muted because you can't hear me.
Jen, Jer's asking you to keep trying. Can you say a couple of words right now and we'll see if it works?
Were you able to hear? Jen?
Boardroom issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it is, because I could hear David when he was talking, and you couldn't hear him.
Jen, would you, one more time, say what you want, and Jer will relay it to us.
Okay. I was just going to clarify about what this system is, because, because there were a couple of questions asked that maybe confused the public if they were to hear this, is that we offer health benefits. Right around 725, 750 employees who choose to participate in our health benefit benefits. Everybody else either doesn't qualify or gets it through a spouse or somewhere else. So this, so this is an add-on, an added benefit to go along with health benefits. It's not going to cost the employees anything. Right now, it's only going to be offered to those who participate in our health benefit plans. But we're going to have a conversation later regarding the possibility of opening it to all, all employees, especially our employees who do not qualify for health benefits. That that may be an added incentive to hang on to those employees and to give them better benefits. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes. Okay. I move that we accept the consent calendar.
With the added changes?
Yeah, we already accepted the amendments, so I'm going to say we accept the consent calendar.
Okay, so we have the motion. Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Board member Albrecht. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, it passes. Okay.
I agree, I think the way you roll it out.
And advertise it at the beginning.
Like he mentioned, the education.
He's going to.
Jen made the motion, or Amber said?
Amber said, yeah, sorry.
I think as you were looking at, talking about, as Jen mentioned, the others who are not qualified for the benefit, if that was to be there, at least on what you said earlier, that, I think that retention would be a lot easier to keep the, well, lunch ladies type thing, because I know a lot of them leave because of it, because they are looking for some type of healthcare. And this would definitely play in that line.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll turn time over for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Yeah, as mentioned, superintendent is out of town, and he's asked me to report out on two items, and I'll have Heather Gerard assist here in a moment. First, just an update and report on the boundary study discussion, which we've had for the last several months. If you recall, in late September, a notice was sent out to the public of potential changes. Per statute, we have to notify the public if, if there's going to be changes, and that has to be 120 days. So we sent that out in September. In December, our demographers, Davis Demographics, shared a report with the board and the public. We have since then been doing some additional work as a team in looking at boundaries in the district and trying to identify trends, potential changes, looking at various programs in preparation to present some options to the, to the school board. So just in terms of a timeline, on March 3rd, we will do more of a formal presentation to the board in that board meeting, that work session with proposed changes. Shortly thereafter, the following week, we have four public meetings scheduled where we're asking any and all that are interested to come to those open houses. It'll be an open house format. We have locations at New Bridge, which we'll have an open house on May, excuse me, March 7th and March 8th, and also Wasatch Elementary School on March 7th and March 8th. Those will be in the evening. We'll be collecting and gathering input, and we are designing it in such a way that we can really zero in, and people will be able to provide feedback on where they live in relation to their thoughts and feelings of the proposed boundary changes. Shortly thereafter, on the 10th, we'll have another board presentation where we'll be able to share that feedback. So it's a quick turnaround. March 9th, we'll be all hands on deck reviewing that feedback in preparation for March 10th's board meeting, where we will share that information with you. And then on the regular session on March 17th, anticipating kind of a finalization of proposed boundary changes and further discussion and approval from the board. So that is the tentative plan and process. As you're aware, we, we have an open enrollment period as well for parents to choose and make boundary decisions on, enrollment decisions on where they'd like their children to attend, and we entertain those during an open enrollment window. By state statute, that is also December through, through the second Friday of February. So as you know, that will have ended. However, we will be opening kind of a phase-two open enrollment period as well, once the boundary decision has been made, that we would also entertain additional boundary change requests. So that's the anticipated process for the boundary study. That's kind of a continuation of what we've had. And then I'll invite Heather Gerard, Director of Pathways, to share some updates of our ALA program and its relation with some alignment with some of our schools. But it's the Advanced Learning Academy and some recent changes. So turn the time over to Heather.
Thank you. Really excited about this opportunity. I will try to keep it brief. But we, so as we've been looking at the boundary changes, we've made the determination that the ALA will have the opportunity to, to become part of Liberty, which is our new primary years program, school that we'll be implementing with, our first implementation year will be next year, we'll be, we'll be implementing the full program. And I just wanted to speak a little bit about kind of what we've done so far, as far as informing the teachers and the community, and what the potential benefits are and what that could possibly mean for ALA and that program. So last week, we met with our, the ALA teachers at Taylor Canyon and kind of explained to them the process. And it, it was really neat to see as they learned more about what the primary years program will, will be at, at Liberty Elementary and, and the opportunities that that will mean for their ALA program, kind of the excitement that was starting to generate among the teachers. There was a few that were, you know, concerned about leaving their current teams. They've definitely built relationships there, but just a lot of excitement about, about that opportunity. And, and we've seen, in addition to that, the Liberty teachers that are now kind of coming on board with, with this understanding, just so excited to embrace the ALA teachers. And, and Ms. Espinoza has been a part of that. She was able to go over to their Celebration of Learning last Friday and, and see what those students have accomplished and, and meet with the teachers and have some great discussions there. That same night, we met with the ALA PTA and kind of took them through the process and, and in a similar way. Once, once we kind of talked them through what the primary years program is and the intent. And. years program is and the intent and, and what that could mean for their students. A lot of excitement there as well. We are, following that, that Thursday, we had an open session at Ogden High, invited all ALA parents. And we had both principals there and, and myself and, and kind of walk them through that process. And then we'll have an additional opportunity, March 2nd, to just make sure that every parent that wanted an opportunity to hear about the change and, and make an informed decision as far as what will be offered at Polk and what will be offered at Liberty and, and what, you know, the, the culture of the school, have an opportunity to meet the principals, to talk to some of the ALA teachers that, that they've had an, an ample opportunity to do so. So that, that's how we've been, that's how we're moving forward. As far as the kind of the connection and why I'm so excited about this opportunity, when you think about what ALA has done for our community and, and the service that it provides to our students, you know, it's, it's an opportunity for some of our most advanced gifted students to, to really take part in a program that, that thrives on inquiry, right? And that cross-curricular connection at, at a level that they're ready for. And project-based learning, you know, the Celebration of Learning that happened on Friday is an example of that. Those three foundational pieces, I think, that, that represent ALA also represent what IB at the primary years does. So we'll see a full school model of students at the appropriate level, right? So your students that receive SPED services, your students that are receiving ELL services, your ALA program students. Every student in that building is going to experience an education that is inquiry-based. And, and with the opportunity for ALA to be a part of that, to continue what they're doing, to, to continue meeting the needs of those students, but in a school-wide program that celebrates school-wide what they're doing and, and recognizes what the impact could be for students to have that opportunity. It's, it's a really exciting moment. We're going to be one of the first schools on the, on the West Coast to offer a full continuum of IB from pub, public education, of IB from primary years and middle years to the DP and the CP at the high school with an accelerated learning option as well. So it's, it's super exciting to be able to, to offer this to, to our families. I think the, the other important piece is, you know, some of those key components of what the primary years program fosters is when we, we talk about the IB learner profile, that skill set that we're working on developing in our students. So when they get to Mount Ogden and then they continue that, the ALA program will just be a value add to that as well. And with, with the options that we'll have at Mount Ogden, right? That full continuum of ALA students experiencing an IB education through that ALA program, right? And then continuing on to Mount Ogden and the options that they will have there, the advanced language opportunities, the AP classes, and that, again, that focus on the IB learner profile where they're developing that skill set. When they transition to Ogden High, they will be fully prepared to choose and be successful in whatever program meets their needs, whether that's the DP program, the Career Pathways program, whether that's AP concurrent enrollment. I, I know earlier today, we, we had some students, I think it was Dunn, Mr. Dunn, talk about Lucy Ballard and how for a lot of our, our students, that jump to IB is a big jump from 10th grade. And, and that this pathway, what this pathway does is ensures that that jump, we're closing that gap, right? Our students are going to be prepared. That jump is not, is not going to be as significant with, with this continuum. And, and that also goes with, with our AP and our concurrent enrollment classes that we offer. They, they will be fully prepared to, to participate in the awesome programs that Ogden High and Ben Lomond offer, if that's where they choose to go and, and be able to do so successfully. So it's, it's really exciting. You know, some things that we've talked about as well is, is ensuring that that continuum from ALA to Mount Ogden happens in a way that's, that's a smooth transition. So we're looking at adding, or we've already added some opportunities for students to take some advanced coursework as 10th graders, again, just to make sure that we're following that continuum. But the opportunity for ALA to be part of this international baccalaureate primary year school and what that I think is going to do as far as an added resource for our ALA teachers is, is going to be, I mean, I think become an integral part of that community, an integral part of that elementary school, as we look at that full school model for IB. And then we're meeting the needs of those ALA students with that IB mindset, but continuing kind of the progress and the success that we've seen with ALA and what the ALA teachers have accomplished is, is going to be really exciting. So. Any questions?
Go ahead. Well, I, I'm going clear back to what Chad was saying earlier. I was just wondering, you mentioned that we have four public meetings coming up, they're open house, the New Bridge date. What was that?
Seven, eight, both the same.
They're both the seventh.
Yeah, they're both, March 7th and March 8th. So our cabinet team will be dividing and conquering and, and having representatives at both meetings.
Okay.
Both nights.
Great. Thank you.
I just wondered, the primary years program, and you were around when Ogden High was going through IB approval. Is it for primary years and middle years, is it as intense and?
It, it is intense with the right purpose. So the, the intensity is, and the supports that IB provides are set up to ensure that when we go through accreditation, that Liberty and Mount Ogden will be fully prepared to offer the program successfully. So in, in a way, it's, it's ensuring that, you know, we, we have our candidacy phase and during that candidacy phase, we, we are meeting with consultants, we're slowly adding in the needs of, of what the teachers are going to do, looking at schedules, ensuring that, right, for example, right now, Keely is looking at her PBIS model, right? Her positive behavior systems, which is how we teach students, you know, how to, not, not just develop skills, but also how to interact with each other, how to walk down the hall. But how can we take the IB learner profile and, and marry that with their PBIS system so it becomes a full part of that culture? So the, the implementation phase and, and the, the rigor of going through candidacy is, is really meant to ensure that our teachers have the right resources and that the school is supported by IB through that implementation phase. So when they breach and they go through candidacy, they're fully prepared to do it successfully. Yeah.
I'm imagining these students progressing through the years. Excuse me. I imagine you're kind of taking their parents along this journey, is that right?
Absolutely. Yeah, so I think being an IB world school, one of the most exciting things about it, and we, we do see it with the DP program, especially at Ogden High, is not only the parent involvement, but the Celebration of Learning that happens, right? And we see this with the ALA community as well, like on Friday with, with the Celebration of Learning, actually is what it's called. But, but with, with the focus of the primary years and the middle years and the, the projects and the outreach to the community, those opportunities will, I think, will really ensure that our parents are not only informed, but really school-wide, right? Not just with the ALA program, but really able to, to celebrate with their student the learning that's happening, right? So at the primary years program, they have the exhibition project and the opportunity to, to kind of take what they're learning in, from multiple areas and, and, and present something that they find interesting, right? It's that student ownership of their learning and that is a huge part of the school culture. That's, that's a big celebration. IB looks very closely at how we, we plan to set that up and support students each year in progressing towards that exhibition, how we're involving the parents in that process and then how we celebrate it. And, and the middle years program, it's similar, but it's more reaching out into the community, right? So students are identifying a potential problem that they would like to solve, that they see in their surrounding community, and they do research and they, the school supports them in practicing the skills and how you communicate and, and how you do research and, and then how you present your possible solution. But in a similar fashion, you're involving the parents, you're, you're celebrating what the student has done and what the student has taken ownership of. So, yeah. It's, it's really exciting. It's going to be, it's going to be great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Heather. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
When she talked about the project for middle years, it made me, reminded me of a project that Mount Fort did a few years back where they, I think it was the 7th graders took on, what would you do if you, if we built a new terminal at the Ogden Airport? And the presentation was amazing, sitting people with their airport people. They should have hired all those kids.
It's really exciting and Lucy, I know Lucy talked a little bit about her project, the, the entrepreneurship that created, that started with her extended essay. So, so it's just, it's really neat to think about the opportunities that our DP students have had and what that means for extending that to the junior high and the elementary at their level, right? But yeah, very similar. She identified a problem and, and worked through solving that and now it's a business. So yeah, it's exciting.
Thank you. I just have, what's, 17 things to talk about. Just kidding. Just a few. So just to let you know, the design, design meetings, we've had three design meetings with the Naylor Wentworth team with regards to the OWTC building, moving forward on that. And I think that's going really well. Wanted to remind three of you that the filing deadline for running for school board has been changed and it's January, or February 28th through the 4th. I sent you out an email, just wanted to make sure you got that. And then just let you know, the budget, facilities, finance committee meeting met yesterday afternoon. We did a little tour of a couple of the buildings here on campus, the SPED building in the annex, the old infirmary. Those buildings have been missing some TLC for a long, long time. And so we, we actually have an estimate provided to us from one of the architects that we work with. And we'll be probably talking to you in an upcoming work session about some proposals we'd like to make to do something with those buildings to make them more habitable for the people that work there. So anyway, that's all I had to report tonight. And I, I did want to thank you for your support on, there are a few big lifts on that consent calendar. The pool thing, that was a big thing, the child nutrition thing, nice thing. We, I just appreciate your confidence and, and those will be great for the district, all of those. So thank you. Oh, and thanks for the contract renewal.
Shoot, was that on there?
I told Nellie to make sure you just slide that in there. And? Yeah, that was the apple.
I'll sort of the apple.
There you go. Thank you. That's all I had.
So I'm assuming there's no public participation. I'll go check. Okay. So do we need a motion to adjourn?
No. You can drop the gavel and say we are adjourned.
Are adjourned.